Good morning, everyone. Good morning. We'd like to welcome everyone to the Mesa City Council Study Session for October the 13th. Councilmember Thompson is not with us this morning. All other council members are present. Item one on our agenda is to review the agenda we have for our Monday, October the 17th meeting. So if you could please refer to that document. Mr. Brady, is there anything you know that you want staff to update us on, on that document?
Item 6E will be removed from the agenda here.
6E?
E.
All right.
And I also wanted to share with council, there's an item here for hearing the contractor for city hall to be part of the preliminary design work. But we also want to present to council kind of an updated version of the design.
Right.
And so Vince will be here on Monday after our study session before the council meeting to go through that with council.
So there's an agenda item on our meeting today.
Yeah.
Is that, are we going to do that Monday instead of today?
No, it's just, I'm just, because it's a city hall item, I want you to know that we're also going to be presenting to you an update on the design work that's being done, that's been done up to date. This is just the contract to bring the contractor on board.
Okay, well, now that I read it, I think it says item 2A will be on Monday night's study session. So I think what was originally agendized for this study session is going to be on Monday's study session to get an update on the city hall. Is that right?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, well, we'll look forward to that. There was a good article in The Republic today about that topic, if anyone's curious, with some renderings that were, looked good. Anything, Mr. Brady, anything else on Monday's agenda that you want to highlight?
A lot of good things, nothing specific, but if there's any questions.
Mr. Freeman, I know has something.
On 7B, on the short-term rentals, has there been any changes to that ordinance or opening? I mean, we're still...
From we talked about.
Okay, there hasn't been any, okay. Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions about Monday's agenda?
I have a question, item 5C regarding the carers dollars, the $6 million, and the allocation on that. We have some money going to Child Crisis Group Home for Foster Youth. Is that actually a new home, or is that for services, or what kind of things we're able to achieve with that half million dollars?
Good morning, counsel, mayor, vice mayor. That is for services at one of their existing shelters. So they serve children in the foster care system, so would otherwise be homeless children.
So is this increasing capacity, or just maintaining?
It can increase their capacity. It can help get kiddos through the system faster into their facility.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions for Monday night? All right. Hearing none, again, item 2A on our agenda is going to be continued until Monday night's meeting. So item 2B is a presentation and to provide direction on proposed changes to the Mesa zoning ordinance regarding drive-through facilities, outdoor eating areas, and temporary use permits. Rachel, everybody has an opinion on this, so I hope you're ready.
Yes, they do.
All right.
Okay, good morning, mayor and counsel. So today I'm going to be discussing some proposed text amendments to the zoning ordinance. And I just want to note that we will be coming back at a later date to discuss the temporary use permit portion of this. So today, we're just going to be discussing outdoor eating areas and the proposed drive-through regulations. So as you are aware, over the past year, planning staff has been working on certain amendments to the zoning ordinance. We've had several meetings, both with the public and with council yourselves, to discuss these. So back in February and July, we came before you with these proposed amendments. We were at the Planning and Zoning Board in March. We've been to our Development Advisory Board, and we've had three public meetings, both in-person and virtual, and then multiple one-on-one meetings with various stakeholders and people from the industry. So the first, the first proposed amendment is to our outdoor eating areas. And the purpose of this is really to capitalize on some of the success that we saw from the Mesa Alfresco program that was authorized with the mayor and council's resolution during the pandemic. During this time, this allowed for kind of administrative overview and allowance of outdoor eating areas. And it really increased opportunities for many businesses. We assisted about 49 businesses and saw about $26,000 reinvested into Mesa's restaurants and bars. So with the, with the proposed text amendments here, we would like to continue on making this accessible to more businesses and to really enhance the aesthetics of these outdoor eating areas. So currently, our regulations require either a special use permit or an administrative use permit in our certain zoning districts. I'll say that in the downtown district, there already is an approved special use permit that covers the entire pedestrian, downtown pedestrian overlay. So those are already covered and allowed through that. But then lastly, with our regulations, we currently just have very limited development standards to regulate the design and aesthetics of these. So what staff is recommending is to amend the zoning ordinance to allow by right in all commercial zoning districts, outdoor eating areas, and to refine our current standards to enhance the design and guide these, these areas. So these standards would address such things as the allowed materials for those barricades or the barriers for outdoor eating areas. It would address issues such as encroachment and how much width would be needed for pedestrian walkways, and how much these eating areas can encroach into required landscape yards or setbacks in other zoning districts. Do you have any questions on, on this amendment?
Mr. Brady.
Are we adding costs to, to these changes as far as additional costs that folks will need it to entail? No?
No, this actually will reduce it since we won't be requiring a special use permit. So now these would just go through regular site plans, so that is a reduced cost to applicants.
Okay, perfect.
And time as well, for not having to go through a public hearing.
Sure.
I have a question. There was a business that contacted me, I think, a few months ago, and they had, they didn't want a drive-through, they wanted to activate a pickup window, you know, not, the distinction, I guess, is, you know, they weren't, you don't drive up and order the food and then pull up and pick it up. It's like you phone in or you text in, in advance, but you can, rather than going inside the store, you can pick it up from, you know, a window. Is that, would that be that scenario? Is that part of what we are addressing now? Would we, is this going to make that scenario any easier or more difficult, or is that a separate issue?
I'll be discussing that just next when I go over the drive-through regulations. But yes, that is something that, that we are distinguishing between the two.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, I'll move into that topic here, so...
So, just quick, so mayor, council... Sorry, I can't tell if I'm on. We're going to move forward then, if that's, part of this presentation is to, because we've gone through, we brought it to you months ago, we went to P&amp;Z, now we're kind of giving one more briefing, and then it would show up next on a council agenda for approval. So for, this is the, specifically the outdoor seating areas, okay.
I'll just say affirmatively that I think that's one of the good lessons from COVID, is the whole, I'll just go with the emphasis on outdoor eating, I think is something we, is a good takeaway. Yes, Julie?
When you guys did the drive-through meetings with the development community, was this also mentioned? Like, did you go through the whole presentation?
Yes, so all three of these text amendments were included with those presentations.
And was there any feedback on this one?
Just a lot of positive feedback.
Okay.
From, from the development community about this and appreciation for considering these amendments.
I hadn't heard anything on this particular thing, so I just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so moving into drive-through regulations, city staff was asked by city council to take a look at our current regulations. And this was in response to some community concerns that we have heard about the kind of externalities or the effects or impacts of drive-throughs. So some of those are kind of the light smell and noise that are generated by these. Some of these concerns have to do with safety, with multiple curb cuts. You often introduce more points of conflict there with pedestrians and bicycles. And then just kind of the emergence of what we're seeing is more of kind of a food court development where we have drive-throughs just lining our arterial streets and kind of weakening the integrity of those community centers and how it affects those established businesses there. So with this, we are looking at trying to minimize the clustering of drive-throughs and protect the city's urban form and really protect the integrity of those neighborhoods. So going back to the, the meetings that we had, because we know there's been a lot of interest from the development community in this. So we did meet with our Development Advisory Forum in April to discuss these amendments. We had a virtual open house in late June. We had another one in September, and the following week, we had an in-person open house. And then as, as I've mentioned, we've had several one-on-one meetings with various developers and people from the industry. So based on these meetings and some of the feedback we've heard, we have, we're proposing some revisions to those original recommendations. So originally, we had proposed to prohibit drive-throughs in the neighborhood commercial district and to require a special use permit in the limited commercial district. We are now recommending that it be required to have a CUP in both the neighborhood commercial and the limited commercial districts. And we are continuing with our recommendation, as discussed before, to define pickup windows and drive-through facilities different. So mayor, to go back to your question on this item, this was one topic that was brought up by city council very early on when we came to discussions about really how we see that the impact of these two facilities are different. And currently in our code, there isn't a distinguishment between the two. So we are proposing to, to separate those, and the, the proposed regulations here would not apply to the pickup windows. So any of those facilities that just have a window, but they don't have a menu board or an ordering box or someone out there placing orders, because we really don't see that the, the stacking as intense with those facilities. Usually, the pickup window facilities are more of like your banks or your pharmacies where, or some restaurants do as well, have facilities where they call ahead, and it's really just going to the window in a faster kind of service as opposed to showing up and placing your orders and, and waiting for them. Continuing on with, with the proposed changes here, based on the feedback from those meetings as well, we have made some adjustments, some adjustments to the base standards that we are recommending. These base standards were allowed to be exceeded by a council use permit, but we are still recommending that we have no more than two drive-throughs located adjacent to one another, and that if there is a third drive-through, that it couldn't be placed within 750 feet of those two drive-throughs, and that's to help prevent some of that clustering that we're seeing. We have removed the recommendation for no more than two drive-throughs in a group commercial center. And instead, we are looking at creating kind of size categories for those, so based off the acreage of the group commercial center, about the number of drive-throughs that would be appropriate for that. But once again, that could be exceeded through the approval of a council use permit. And lastly, we have removed the, the recommendation that no more of the drive-throughs, no more than two drive-throughs be located at an intersection.
Why is that? I mean, if traffic and congestion are one of the byproducts of this, would, is it, would a traffic, traffic engineer say, you know what, that's really, well, I'll go back to the original question, why did we strike that?
That was based on feedback from our public meetings. There, there was a lot of concern that this would limit the redevelopment of smaller parcels, kind of infill parcels along intersections. A lot of feedback that they felt like it was too restrictive.
It's part of a compromise in the conversation, pushback, so. But it is a concern, mayor, to your point. And, and I think, doesn't that kind of go back to your, Rachel, your point about, by just saying no more than two, it kind of suggests irregardless of the size of the commercial area? So we want to, I think we want to go to more of a, what'd you call it, a tier?
Tiered approach, yes.
So maybe, we're striking that, but we may come back and say, but if it, if it's only this size, it may be two, and if it's larger, it could be three. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yes, and I, obviously, all of this is very, you know, dependent on the particular intersection, because what's at an intersection is, are we talking about exactly on the hard corner, or are we talking about two or three, you know, pads over? Does that qualify at the intersection? So I don't...
Right. Mayor, council, so when, when we looked at that regulation, it was just at the immediate corners. So you could have a scenario where you would have two drive-throughs at each corner, but you would still be allowed to have another drive-through next to it on each one of these. And then that's when that, that other provision about if you wanted a third one, that one would have to be separated by 750 feet. So there still was quite a bit of allowance within that regulation. But as, as Mr. Brady said, this was part of kind of trying to reach a compromise and work with...
And I'm all about compromise, and I guess I just want to, I'd love to find a place in Mesa or in the valley somewhere that has more than two drive-ins on corners and go look at it and say, just get a feel for whether or not, I would say, wow, yeah, this, I can see this is poor planning, or this, to me, this seems like it's adding unnecessary congestion, or not.
Stately and...
Yeah, I'm sure, stately and baseline.
But see, it's Gilbert on the other side, that's the...
Yeah. I appreciate the, the give and take here, but just for my own edification, I think I might, as, as this is kind of in the mix, I might be a little more observant as I drive around and see if I, how I feel about having more than two drive-throughs at a corner. Julie?
Thank you so much for doing this, by the way. I know that staff has gone to a lot of extra work to make sure all the voices can be heard. And I, my biggest concern was this, is that we were just painting a big, broad brush over our huge gigantic city and treating every intersection the same. So I actually like this, some of these compromises, we'll call them, just because every intersection is different, every area is different, and so different intersections and areas need different things. And so I appreciate, I feel like this puts us more into that category so that it's not just a blanket rule across the whole city. So that's, that's what this feels like to me, that we're trying to look at things individually. Is that what, is that what this is doing?
I think we still have a good set of base standards that we can address the clustering, but as you said, this was, this was part of the compromise. But we're here to discuss this with council and, and go back and revise these as you see fit, so.
So mayor, council, actually, what we're presenting to you today is where we've come so far. We're not proposing to move forward yet. We know there's more work to be done. So we're not suggesting this is ready to go, but we wanted to share with you where we are today. We still need to get back to the community with more details. We just kind of want to share, here's, there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of, you know, different opinions about this. And to councilmember Spilstra's point, we are having different experiences throughout the city, right? And I think we're trying to figure out how to make that work, because we do have parts of the city where we have neighbors, when we're doing development agreements, and I think of Longo, who didn't want any drive-throughs, right? And then I have councilmembers also who are, whether it's infill or new development, who are seeing a concentration of drive-throughs, and that's becoming more problematic from a traffic standpoint. I think there are other parts of the city where we're trying to do infill that we would love to see, or those, so we're trying to figure out how we can administer that and make it work for every part of the city. So, because there's some parts of the city where people don't want another drive-through just because it's congestion, or they, they can't get to the others shopping or whatever destination that's behind there. And others, they would love to see more opportunities. So we're, we've got to figure out a way to kind of thread the needle on this that allows us to evaluate it, that meets the needs of that, that part of town.
And I'll just say, in traveling, when you go to some other places, even Gilbert, lots of restaurant, typical sit-down restaurant-style places have drive-throughs now. Like, I'll say Cafe Rio, like, a place like that that wouldn't be a drive-through normally. Southern Utah and in Gilbert, they now have Cafe Rios with drive-throughs, right? Like, it's just, I just see, in my world, a lot of people want that convenience, and especially if it's off a freeway, you know, you're running kids to practices or whatever. So you want the convenience of something right off the freeway. And so I feel like society's moving more towards drive-throughs, and so for us to, like, squash that, it's not going to be a good thing. But in some cases, it needs to be squashed maybe a little bit. So I think that's, like you said, that's the hard thing about it.
Mr. Brady?
Are we marrying kind of other municipalities' drive-through regulations, or are neighbors doing on-drive-throughs?
Other municipalities, councilmember Heredia, they don't have the, the number of regulations that we're proposing here, but they are similar. Where in certain zoning districts, they are restricting them. It's just hard to compare those because it's not apples-to-apples with their zoning districts about what they, you know, our NC is an equivalent to, you know, their downtown core. But we do know that in certain districts that they do restrict them.
Okay. So, thank you, mayor. So Rachel, when we get a new fast-food facility coming in, do you guide them in terms of the drive-through? There's one on Gilbert and, I'm sorry, it's on McKellips and Power Road, and it's a popular food chain. They, you guys, somehow, they did a really good job on that because it's very popular, and they have huge lines going through, but they're, they're not, it's not getting into the street. It's the way they've designed it. So are you working with them when they come in and say, okay, this is what your drive-through needs to look like?
Yeah, mayor, councilmember Luna, so in our zoning ordinance, we do have regulations about stacking and about where a drive-through lane can be located in relation to the street.
Right.
So we do spend a lot of time working with applicants and redesigning the site to make sure that the circulation is appropriate. Where we see more challenges is with the group commercial centers where they're permitted by right, and we see just the clustering of them coming in.
Right.
And that ends up taking a lot of negotiations sometimes to, to prevent some of those externalities there.
Okay, because there's one across the street that I think has a potential to be problematic going into the commercial area, the, the one, the one south of McKellips and the Power Road. You guys did a real good job in terms of the drive-through and how that's working.
Yeah, and mayor and councilmember Luna, to add to this, we have heard some concerns about, about more of those internal connections between group commercial centers. So as part of these amendments, we are proposing a stacking to internal drives to help some of that as well. Because sometimes, you know, we address it very well within the site itself, but sometimes the stacking becomes an issue with the internal driveways. That is something we're trying to address with this.
Okay, great, thank you, Rachel.
Vice mayor?
Thank you for listening and making revisions and trying to find that middle ground that works for all of us. I do like going back to the council use permit and make it flexible, because I see some intersections are more arterial, you have traffic moving at 45 miles an hour. That is a different environment versus near a neighborhood that's a lot slower and what that means on the impact. As far as, I know the developers depend heavily on a lot of drive-throughs, not only for their return on investment, but getting traffic into the shopping area. So the businesses that are setback from there, they're depending on some of that traffic too. So looking like councilmember Luna mentioned, some traffic design standards or whatever, so we have those minimal impacts along the sidewalk and to intersections and pedestrians, and designing that would maybe accomplish some relief on, on being able to accommodate that. From the developer's standpoint, they do want to see the text before anything is decided by council. I know this is a preliminary, and but I'm assuming at one point we'll have the ordinance by text written review before a final approval. I think that's, oh, and my other comment was, of course, the size of the development. As we had mentioned before, a tight corner may only be able to accommodate like one, but some of our corner developments are acres, acres, so that would have to be more flexible as far as numbers and such, and not apply universally depending on the size of the development. So I just wanted to bring that up, so. Looks good. Thank you for doing the work on it, and look forward to seeing the text.
All right. Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, mayor. So I appreciate you reaching out to the development community. I know several of my friends have reached out to me and then turned to you as well. And on a, you know, one of the things I have in my district is that Country Club McKellips, we have five drive-throughs. And so I think clustering is an issue, and, you know, separating out the drive-throughs, I think it's important that we do that, and then have the separation component 750 feet does work for a lot of development, because there's, there's also some infill parcels along, in my district, that developers are utilizing and putting in drive-throughs in them, and they're well off the corners, they're not on the hard corners. So help me understand, on the hard corners, are they typically zoned for a drive-through, or do they need to be rezoned?
Mayor, councilmember Freeman, so they typically are commercially zoned, so they are zoned for drive-throughs.
Okay. And let's just say in the future, one of the drive-throughs chooses to go out of business, and another drive-through chooses not to take over that, that parcel. What, what happens then if, if, say, a different business chooses to come into that drive-through? Say, I'll use a liquor store, is that permitted by use on going from drive-through to a liquor store?
Mayor, councilmember Freeman, I don't know off the top of my head if that use, where that use is allowed, but I can talk in the sense of, I know we've had some questions about non-conformities and kind of the grandfathering of these. So if that, if that use is continued within, so if a, a drive-through is to go out of business, another one could come in within, within a year and still have established that use, and it would be grandfathered under that.
Yeah, I was just thinking of some provisions to protect that hard corner. If, if the fast food chooses to go out of business, then another business to, you know, is coming in there that's not fast food or beats this criteria, what recourse do we have as a, you know, a council to, or yourselves as staff to figure out, well, is this use allowed? And do they, you know, do they have monument signs, the signage, all the things that are comprised of, of a corner? Because I just don't want to get in some conundrum down the road to where, okay, now the fast food goes out of business, another business comes in, and then the neighborhood and the community doesn't like that business. So...
Yeah, mayor, councilmember Freeman...
I know I'm throwing a curveball at you.
So we would look like that, we would look at that situation like we do with any of our development. It would be a matter of what the proposed use is, if it's allowed within that zoning district, what the proposed changes to the site were, and if that would trigger any sort of site plan modification or public hearing. So I wouldn't really be able to address that without knowing the specific scenario.
Right. I'm trying to give you one, but I'm not doing a good job. I just know that if, if the use changes on that corner from fast food to something else, what protection to the neighborhood, to the, to developer, to, to all the ownership there? What happens there? And, and I just, maybe looking at that, maybe the development community can provide some guidelines with that.
Yeah, most likely you would have to go through some sort of site plan modification and, and would either be, no matter what, it would be reviewed by staff, but in some cases, it would be required to go back to planning and zoning or to city council, depending on the situation and the original approvals of that site.
Okay. One last question. You never mentioned curbside pickup. Is curbside different than a pickup window? Or whether you run the, you know, when the restaurant runs out your food to wherever you parked at?
Councilmember Freeman, so if, if those were located within parking stalls, that would not be included within these regulations, that was, would just be allowed?
Just be allowed, okay. All right, thank you.
Well, I'll just add that I, I do appreciate the work that's gone into this. I think this is an issue for our day, right? I mean, with, with the pandemic and everything, and the way the traffic and development and just the household habits that we've all developed have evolved over the last few years, I think our sophistication in the way we design and, and use the drive-throughs is, is changing. There are some examples of, of, of bad use of drive-throughs, you know, where people are pedestrians and traffic and turning radiuses and the scrapes on the sides of walls and cars, and, I mean, I think we've gotten better at this, and so I think it is time to maybe upgrade and, but it, one concern I have, I think we, there are some, somewhat, a little bit of irrational complaint, sometimes people just think that drive-throughs are not a classy enough business. Sometimes people just think that drive-throughs are not a classy enough business for them and they are just kind of arbitrary and there are criticisms of certain brands of drive-throughs that they think are, you know, not snooty enough for their neighborhood. And I don't think, I just like to remind people, we're not in the business of picking winners and losers. We regulate traffic, we regulate standards and we, we want it to be a good use of the engineering and to fit. But it's not the city's job to go out and recruit and dictate to developers, you know, the brands that they put on their developments. So I think we keep that, that discussion separate from traffic and engineering and all of the, the good reasons to get in and regulate this.
I'd like to make just one more comment. The, the subject of drive-throughs didn't become really big until, in my opinion, till on these little coffee places that maybe they're like less than 500 square feet and 100% of their business is the drive-through, right? So the stacking of cars is enormous. They have an enormous volume, but they don't have the alternative of someone being able to go in, sit down. And that has really choked a lot of the shopping centers, created some traffic hazards, pedestrian hazards. I know we chose not to differentiate between those that are 100% drive-through versus those who have a footprint and a drive-through window. I'm just going to put that out there just because I think some of the problems that we see are sometimes with those little tiny places that stack cars 30 deep almost 24 hours a day. So let's put that out there. Thank you.
So, don't, don't we have some standards though for that, like the certain one that David Luna mentioned? Is it a big deal if we mention brand names? Are we not supposed to do that or something?
Well, yeah, I just.
I said Cafe Rio. Anyways, the one he was talking about that we all know and love, like they made, when they created that, they had a bigger site so that they could incorporate all those lines. And the one you're talking about, one of the ones you're talking about on like Gilbert and McKellips, for example, they're moving off the corner and moving down west off of McKellips so that they have more room for all of those cars. Like, do we have standards for that or, or requirements when, when they know they're going to have huge drive-through lines? Because I know we don't differentiate between brands, but there are some that create more drive-throughly, um, traffic.
Mayor, Councilwoman Spillsbury, so we don't have regulations about the minimum lot size for certain uses, but those get, those get established through your setbacks, through minimum open space. We do have regulations on the stacking distance between the windows and, so they get, they get looked at through those lens as opposed to having, needing a minimum lot size for a use.
Okay. That does make a difference, yeah.
All right. Well, this is, we're, I look forward to continuing to work with you on this. Thank you for the work.
All right, so Mayor and Council, so based on this, staff's next steps would be to go back and finalize this. And based on your direction, we would be going back to Planning and Zoning Board for the outdoor seating areas on October 26th for their recommendation and possibly to November 16th for the drive-through regulations for their recommendations and then coming back to you for action on December 8th.
Great.
All right.
All right, thank you, Rachel.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Brady.
I apologize. Can we just go back to the agenda? There is one item I did, I went over, I just couldn't find it. It's 5D and it's to sell city property to Union Pacific. And I think it would be just interesting for the council to know, that's part of the Pirate Program and Beth just has a few, just two slides, just share that with you. I think it's just important to know what the city is doing in selling property to support the Pirate Program and how that, how this cut through or the rail coming through the property is going to affect it. So I apologize, I skipped over that one.
So that's one of the slides.
5D.
So just start out with this slide. Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'll start out with this slide to kind of acclimate you to where I'm talking about. The Union Pacific Railroad is wanting to build a spur line from west of Sausman, south of Pecos, over and along the Pecos alignment to CMC Steel at Meridian Road. CMC will be one of their first customers. Development Services told me last week they are in with their 60% plans for review and they want to have their property acquisition done by the end of the year, this year. We are in kind of a key location. In 1942, 80 years ago, we bought 35 acres of property along the northwest corner of Pecos and Sausman, kind of where the cursor is right there. So that's our property and that's what we are looking at selling right away through. You can see on this slide as it will cross through diagonally through our property. So I'm going to go to a, a larger slide that kind of blows it up. We own 35 acres in this location and they're going to be crossing us here. So they want 4.8 acres of right-of-way. They appraised at 650 a square foot plus about $401,000 in severance damages because they cross our side at a diagonal. So the sale will come in at about 1.78 million on this property. They want to be closed and have all their property acquisition done by the end of the year. It does leave just over 19 acres on the northwest corner of a property that we are considering for a future transfer station and recycling facility in southeast Mesa.
We made, made sure there was enough, it left us enough property to still consider that as a future opportunity. And then we would probably also look at selling that, yeah, down there. And we're aware of that and looking for a property, possibility for a logistics center and other development out there, so.
Just curiosity, does the, the fact, having the rail spur on this property increase the value of the property? Because manufacturer or someone, you know, who, who values that service, is that?
That's what we're going to say.
Yeah. So I guess my question is, I'm, I'm all about, I'm all about the, the recycling facility.
Yes.
But is it, is this property now too valuable for that purpose? I mean, would it be better to sell this to someone who wants to be a manufacturer that wants to have access to the rail? Or maybe that's, maybe our recycling facility would like to have access to the rail?
Yeah, Mayor, the nice thing about this location for the recycling center, we've actually just have made an agreement with the town of Gilbert that we're going to both work on drawings, preliminary drawings to go to 15% of what this could be in the future. Because there's a possibility, there's a strong possibility that they would join with us. And because it's on the southeast part of Mesa, it works for us, but it also works very well for them. So from that strategic standpoint, bringing in partnership with Gilbert for the materials recycling center and, and the transfer station, which is, could be very important. This site does work very well for us on that perspective.
And Mayor, we are rapidly developing Pecos Road right now. We are running out of property because we're also looking for stormwater basins in this area. It is hard to find properties large enough. I do know we have another department that's interested in the other corner as well for a facility ultimately, so we, we'll have to talk about that too.
Governmental use is, is important news. So yeah, I know this is very strategic property and I guess we, it's, thank you to the city council 85 years ago for buying.
Can you imagine what it was like?
It was the middle of no, for sure, yeah.
We, we don't even have any record of what we paid for it, but I'm sure Mr. Kennington's back there smiling when he sees these numbers today.
Yeah.
So.
All right, well, the, I, I think it'd be, it's great to get more updates on Pirate because we, we talk about it behind the scenes a lot, but I'm anxious for the, the public to learn about this more because it is an issue. There are some concerns, you know, about traffic out there, but I think we need to help people understand what a, how important this is to the industrial users out in this area and how hard they've worked to get to this point on it.
May I add a question?
Yes.
So to that point, what is it zoned now?
Probably ag, probably.
It's probably ag property right now, so I have to check, but I don't have that in my head.
We haven't, we haven't done anything in the last.
It's just sat there for 80 years.
Eight years.
In perpetuity.
But the general plan for that area is, is what? Remind me.
Oh, right down here is probably industrial, I imagine.
It's all industrial?
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, that would be employment.
It's employment. Okay. All right.
Recycling centers have a lot of good jobs, I think.
You think so?
Yeah.
They do.
All right. Any questions on this, Council? Thank you for alerting us to that, Mr. Brady. All right, any, moving on then, next item on our agenda is item three, to acknowledge receipt of various meetings and minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Luna, seconded by Ms. Spillsbury. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, thank you, that passes unanimously. Next is current events and conferences attended. I know we've had a busy week. Mr. Luna?
Thank you, Mayor. We had a busy week. Last weekend, we had to celebrate Mesa, so Andrea, thank you for your hard work and your staff. We had a great turnout. How many people, how many people do you think were there?
How many people?
Saying 10 to 13,000.
Yeah, but you, but you expanded it a little further, it looks like, so.
We did, it was based on where we suffered.
Yeah, so anyway, good job and great, great attendance and appreciate the hard work of your staff for doing that. Let's see, attended the new burn building at Mesa Fire Training Facility, that was pretty cool and they put some cool videos together and I think my colleagues are going to talk a little bit more about that. Also, attended a roundtable with local businesses along with my colleague here with Congressman Greg Stent, so that was a real positive event. And of course, we had the Cesar Chavez unveiling ceremony at Eagles Park. But I do want to thank Andrea for leading the charge as well as Anna and Kevin from the PIO office and Tanya Gerard and Sarah Miranda and of course, MHN for putting together such a great and exciting program. And then Mariachis, and we had a real good turnout. So thanks city staff for, for being there, for being part of this wonderful celebration. And it was great to have Julie Chavez-Rabigas among us, as well as my colleagues that were in attendance. And thank you for supporting this effort. Thank you, appreciate it. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Who'd like to go next? Thank you.
Well, it's been a busy time since we didn't have study session last week. On Tuesday, October 4th, I attended an ASU, I was on a panel at an ASU class with, on cross-sector leadership. I was on a panel with Ron Williams covering the private sector, Liz Paulson nonprofit, and I was on public and there's another gentleman on the military sector, is a really great class. And in fact, today I have one of the students from the class shadowing me, Daria Whitaker. And Daria, do you want to stand up, say hello? Or, I'm like, no, I'm embarrassing her. But I appreciate her interest in the public service. So later that day, the mayor and I, and I think it was just the two of us, attended the Hope's Frybread Rib Cutting. They have a new location, opening their doors on, I think it's 144 South Mesa Drive, just south of First Avenue. So we're excited to have them in the downtown area. On the next day, on October 5th, I attended a coffee with a cop with the Central Substation as well as Fiesta. At the Central Coffee was at Refuge Coffee, I believe that's the name of it, Alma School and University. And Officer Height was actually running the drive-through windows, so thank you to all the officers that showed up and did more than just have a coffee. And it was a great event. On Sunday, I attended the Aspire Graduation and that's an academy camp for girls 14 to 18, introduces them to careers in firefighting, policing, policing and other emergency response positions. And women are extremely underrepresented in these fields. And so I was so happy and thank you to everybody who was involved in running another class. These girls were inspiring, energetic, and I appreciate that we have this program in Mesa. On Monday, I attended a courageous creativity course that was set up at the Mesa Arts Center for the schools, understanding the use of creativity and arts and learning. There's some interesting statistics that employers rated creativity as a, in their top three of skills of what they want from employees as we move into the 21st century. And so keeping that alive within our education system is extremely important. And of course, we recognize that also in our creative economy and Innovation District in downtown Mesa. On Tuesday, I attended the Arizona Forward Thrive and 2035 Conference. And the mayor was on a panel talking about things that we need to do as cities and opportunities in order to meet sustainability goals and into a new economy. I attended a workshop on circular sustainability and entrepreneurship and how taking materials, recycling and have them into a new product or a new use in a local environment. I think it was very beneficial to learn about that and I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Others? Okay. Mr. Freeman?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Tonight's going to be my community safety fair over at Fire Station 206. And so if you like free food, free food shots, free shedding, shredding of documents, please come. So we've reached out to the community. One of the, the highlights to this really excited me was a family contacted me, well, actually contacted Katie Brown, that said, "We would like to cook for you." And we asked, well, nobody just says, "We'd like to cook for you." So we asked why and they said in 2006, their family was involved in a house fire. Their house completely burned down, they barely made it out alive, seven people. And they're just so thankful for Mesa Fire, Mesa Police and all the things that were done to help them become, you know, survivors of a house fire. And so they like to promote, smoke detectors were a key thing, warning for them. Their smoke detectors went off and they're, at 2:00 in the morning, you go, "Well, what's going on?" And they said, "We didn't even know our smoke detectors worked." So with that said, I would encourage each of us to check our smoke detectors, you know, just push the button and see if they work. And when you travel, I do that, I make sure everything works. So this community safety fair is very important to the community, to our neighborhoods and reaching out. So next week, I'll let you know how well it does, but that's just one of the highlights, why I like to include a, a safety fair. And thank you, Mr. Brady, for the staff and everybody helping because it is beneficial and, and the neighborhoods like to reach out. Our code compliance, Fire and Life Safety will be there as well as a lot of the other departments, so thank you. I'll end with that.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Amen to everyone, all those great activities. I, I can't help but give an additional shout out to Hope's Frybread. Just because it's, it's fun and exciting to have a Native American, family-owned business with great food, you know, join the downtown food scene, so can't recommend it enough. The food is terrific and I, I hope they can keep up with the demand because I think it's going to be very well received. All right, Mr. Brady, what does our schedule of future meetings look like?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder, we'll have a council meeting this Monday, October 17th. I think council has a photo right before that at 4:45 under the purple ribbon out front. And then you'll move, come over here at 5:15, Domestic Violence Month, yes. Oh, purple.
Purple.
I have to do a show today, but again, Monday, just to remind you today, for Monday, purple I think is the preference of, of color to wear, so that's Monday. And then also, this Sunday, the City of Mesa will be participating in the Phoenix Pride Parade. That's from 10:00 AM to noon and it's in Phoenix. So I think there's some of the members of council participating in that. I know we have several staff that'll be there also. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, the, the topic of Domestic Violence Month that we're going to, we're purple for, I know the city prosecutors and city attorneys events, did we mention that already? Did I not hear that?
So, Mayor and Council, we haven't. We're going to talk about it Monday night, but it is Wednesday, October 19th at 5:30 to 6:30 PM at Pioneer Park. So we'll have some great speakers there and we'll also have nonprofits there for people that want more information or that need, need help.
Okay, thank you. That's always a very, very poignant event. All right, Council, if there's nothing else, that concludes our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Luna, seconded by Ms. Spillsbury. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, thank you, we are adjourned. Aye, thank you, we are adjourned.